Welcome one, welcome all to our meeting. And we're honored to have a joint session with our illustrious school board, our partners in making this city great. But at this point, I'd like to defer to Amanda Barnes, our city clerk, just to go over some of the procedures that we're going to be utilizing in this current session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council and members of the Virginia Beach School Board. This is the city clerk, Amanda Barnes. The school board members are participating electronically. Also, please note this meeting is being recorded. I note the following school board members are online and participating electronically. We have Chairwoman Carolyn Rye, Beverly Anderson, Sharon Felton, Victoria Manning, and Jessica Owens at the moment. To ensure the live electronic event is successful, please note the following meeting instructions must be followed. Once the mayor opens discussion, I will recognize the speakers in the order which they raise their hand either in person or via the virtual hand. School board members, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing or reverberation. Remember, should you wish to make a comment, you must raise your virtual hand. It is important to also lower your virtual hand at the conclusion of your comments. Once you are recognized, please wait two to three seconds to ensure everyone can hear your complete remarks. Please do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as only one feed is open at a time to minimize the echo or reverberation, and as such, you will be unable to hear a response. Once recognized, should the speaker not respond or a technical issue occur which renders the comments unintelligible, I will move on to the next speaker. Lastly, please conclude your comments or questions by stating you'll stand by for answers. That's my cue to let me know you're finished. Mayor, members of council, are there any questions about the process? School board members, are there any questions about the process? If so, raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, Mayor, thank you, and I'll now turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, at this point, can we proceed with the presentation?
Mayor, members of councils, and school board members, each year the city and school staff, they work to prepare a five-year forecast of the revenue and expenditures of the city and the schools. Similar to last year's forecast, Greg Gudendorst, chief economist for HRPDC, will provide an overview of the regional economy. Thereafter, Kevin Chatalier, the city's budget director, and the school CFO, Pharrell Anzakar, will provide an overview of the forecast for both the cities and the schools.
Thank you, Mr. Dehaney. Mr. Mayor, members of council and school board, it is truly a pleasure to be here once again. Very strange and unprecedented times. But I am happy to be here and, as in the past, I'd like to take you through a little bit of the regional economy and provide kind of a regional outlook of where things stand. And then talk a little bit about, starting with, I should say, the national economy and then going right into the regional economy. So, when we look at, you know, you really can't have a discussion of the economy right now without COVID, and unfortunately, COVID has kind of taken a lot over. And I think it's given us a little bit of clarity as to what it means when we actually look at the economy. A lot of people, they look to the economy, they look to the stock market, and if you look at the stock market, things don't actually seem so bad. We're up 377% from the pre-recession low, 127% from the pre-recession high. Things are going well when you look at the stock market, probably because it's not a very good measure of economic output. It does look pretty well, though. If we move away from Wall Street and kind of go to Main Street and we look at what is actually happening recently with the economy, the picture is very, very muddled. And so, you know, if you're looking at Wall Street Journal Daily, you're throwing data constantly, and it's very tough to make sense of it, heads or tails of it. But what you can see is there was an unprecedented drop in gross domestic product, the broadest measure of the economy. We saw a huge drop first and second quarter, and then an unprecedented gain in third quarter. With that big drop, you can see we're still 3.5% below where we were in fourth quarter 2019. But really, again, what does that mean? I think jobs is where it really starts to make sense to people, and here's where we can understand what's happening on Main Street. And I'd like to take you all the way back to 2007, 2007, 2008. You can see what happened to the Great Recession. The Great Recession to us was something we had never seen before either. And you saw this slow decline in jobs and then a very long and consistent gradual hike all the way to February of this year. And we saw consistent increases in employment, and then the sudden shock of COVID. Now, clearly, this is a different type of recession. I don't think there's any confusion there. There was a real sharp drop, an unprecedented drop. We lost 22 million jobs in a matter of months, and we got 12 million jobs bounced back pretty quick. So, the type of recession that we're facing and the type of environment that we're in with COVID has been unlike anything we've ever really seen. One thing we are seeing is we had a big surge, a big jump back in terms of jobs initially, but those job increases have since slowed. Right now, we're still 2.9% up from the pre-recession high. With respect to the unemployment rate, I've told you in years past, the unemployment rate in and of itself is kind of a useless number. But if we look at the rate in terms of the change over time, that's really what's important and the trends that are going on. And we can see, too, how significant the spike in the unemployment rate was. The Great Recession high was 10%, and with the COVID recession, we jumped almost 15% and quickly dropped down to just under 7% where we are now. So there is just, again, a really significant difference. So that kind of tells you what has been happening so far with respect to the national economy. Let's start moving this to the direction of the region. What does this mean for the region? So this really looks at the economic decline and recovery since the Great Recession. And some of you all might remember the closing the Ford plant way back in 2006. That's actually when Hampton Roads initially jumped into the Great Recession, all those years ago, over a decade ago. And you can see how hard of a time Hampton Roads, which is the green line on this chart, how difficult a time we had of climbing out of this Great Recession. It took the state and the nation about 76 months to recover all their jobs that they had lost to get above that red line. It took them 76 months to do it. It took Hampton Roads 120 months, 10 years, to get back all the jobs we had lost from the Great Recession. And we were slowly plugging away, and then you can see the impact then of the COVID recession with the sharp drops. Hampton Roads, the green line, the white line is the US, and the orange line is Virginia. And you can see how significant that was. Now, the US and Virginia have since already jumped back up where they were prior to the Great Recession. Hampton Roads is still below that. If we look just at, this is non-farm civilian employment in Hampton Roads. These are the payroll job numbers. They're probably the most consistent numbers and the best numbers we can get on a month-to-month basis that don't include the military. But here, you can kind of see, just in terms of what has happened in Hampton Roads, the trajectory, and that, again, that slow climb that we had following the Great Recession. We lost essentially 90,000 civilian jobs in Hampton Roads in two months because of COVID. And we've since gained 40,000 jobs, or 50,000 jobs back. So we're still 40,000 jobs shy of where we were. So there was, again, just like the nation, we saw a really significant drop and a really quick bounce back, but a partial bounce back. Now, the industry sectors that are being impacted by this clearly are not all feeling the same strain. And so if we look at the chart here, we can see that, you know, over the past year, some industries have actually continued to gain employment. And in Hampton Roads, federal government, scientific and technical services, which is really related to government contracting, and transportation utilities has moved forward. You know, we have $5 billion worth of transportation projects being built in this region right now. The ports are record September. So some of the industries have actually seen growth over the past year. But then when we look on the losing end of this chart, we can see administrative and support positions. Those are usually the first ones that get cut in a recession. Lower-end entry jobs, the people who can typically least afford it, they got hit really hard. Leisure and hospitality, the tourism sector certainly got cut, not so much in Virginia Beach, but in the historic triangle part of the region, they especially got hit hard. And then healthcare and retail trade. Healthcare was a little bit of surprise to some. My wife works in Centerra Hospital. They saw a huge, huge cut in staff. They had all this buildup prior to COVID. And then, of course, a lot of the population that go to the hospital was cut, and so there was a huge cut, and hospitals have been hurt significantly. So this is a one-year change. If we look at the 10-year change, what's happened over the past decade? Here, too, we can see, you know, Hampton Roads has been doing okay with respect to federal government employment. Federal government has been buoying the economy in the last 10 years. Scientific and technical, once again. Transportation and utilities. So we have seen similar growth here. I'm sorry, this slide was supposed to be changed. You'll have a different slide maybe in your handout. But we do see, in terms of the 10-year change, local government has seen a significant hit over 10 years. Administrative and support, state government, wholesale trade have been hit significantly. With respect to unemployment rates, again, you know, I tend not to want to look at the rate, but the trend is what's important here. Hampton Roads typically has an unemployment rate that's below the national average, and you can see just at the end there how drastic that decline has been. But what is important in Hampton Roads is if we look year over year in Hampton Roads with respect to the unemployment rate, our labor force has actually declined year over year by 20,000 people. So we have 20,000 people who say they're no longer in the labor force in this most recent September compared to September 2019. Our employment has been cut 55,000 in that regard. And our unemployment, the number of people who say they're unemployed, has risen 35,000. So while we have jumped back partially, we're still in really rough shape with respect to employment in the region. This was kind of an interesting chart for us to put together. We usually, we've never actually done initial weekly unemployment claims because the data doesn't really show anything. We went from an initial unemployment claims in the region of about 100 a week to 30,000. And if one chart really explains kind of what happened with the region with respect to COVID, I think this one really is incredibly relevant. You can see the continued unemployment claims, how we shot up with respect to unemployment claims, and then how we're slowly coming back down. But a lot of federal programs played into this and how people filed for unemployment and who stayed on unemployment and when they came off unemployment. And specifically, you can see in July there, when federal benefits ended, we saw a pretty significant decrease. That just kind of tells us that these federal programs, the national federal programs, play a hugely significant role even at the local level here. So the charts that I just showed you kind of tell you the data that is the most current, the data that we know. There's a lot of information, I was talking to Kevin about this before, there's a lot of information that we have that's a year old. And usually, we look at that information from the Census and the Bureau of Economic Analysis. It's the best information we have, kind of tells us where we are. A lot of that information is no longer relevant because things have changed so significantly in this past year. It'll be a year before we really understand the whole impact. That said, I'm going to take you through some of these charts just kind, so you can understand where we've been and what things kind of look like. If we look at relative per capita income, this is very significant for the region because income plays such an important role in quality of life. And when we look at the relative per capita income here, anytime one of those bars, those silver bars, is below the black bar, that means that our relative per capita income in Hampton Roads is below that of the nation. And so for the last eight, nine years, you can see how we have been on a declining trend. And that's really a trend that we want to see stop. This shows that year over year, over the past seven, eight years, we have been faring worse and worse with respect to the nation. On the flip side, if we look at median family income, which is probably a better indicator of quality of life, Hampton Roads actually seems to be faring well. This is a different dataset, so this shows how families in the region compare to the nation. And where the nation has seen growth, so has Hampton Roads, and we actually outpaced the federal growth rate in a couple of these years, and we certainly have a higher median family income than the national average. So between the two statistics, I would prefer a higher median family income than a per capita income, but both are really relevant to the well-being of Hampton Roads and the One of the things that we're all quite aware of is how much impact the federal government has in Hampton Roads, especially with respect to defense. Between 35% to 40% of the region's economy is tied to defense. And when we look at defense and we try to understand what's going to happen next, we look at these defense outlays. And really, the definition of cyclical is right here. We can see what happened with the Korean War, the Vietnam War, the 80s Cold War buildup, the War on Terror, and how cyclical federal expenditures have been. And I want to, you know, look at the Vietnam War, especially where you can see the drawdown and then the huge increase in the 80s Cold War buildup that really kind of moved the Hampton Roads economy forward. In the most recent years, you can see that defense outlays have once again been creeping back up, and outlays is just the amount of money that the federal government is putting towards defense. If we look at military personnel, which is one component of outlays, you can see that military personnel, both across the nation, that's the white line, and in Hampton Roads, has been decreasing. So essentially, as expenditures have crept up in recent years, personnel have not. So in the past, and I'm going to flip back to the previous chart here in a second, you can see that with the Vietnam increase and the 80s Cold War buildup, the increase in outlays equaled increase in personnel. But with the War on Terror, increase in outlays did not increase personnel because investments were made in other areas, specifically technology and contracting. So what happened in Hampton Roads is we saw a huge increase in defense contracting. And the cuts to military personnel for some time were offset by increases in defense contracting. And why this is important is because what we saw there in 2011, everybody remembers that horrible word, sequestration. We had the federal government, Congress essentially say, "We need to get spending under control because the deficits have ballooned so large, and if we can't come to an agreement, then we're just going to cut all spending by 10%. And we're not going to do it in any type of strategic way, we're just going to cut it." And when they did that, the impact on Hampton Roads was absolutely horrible. You know, on a competitive level, Hampton Roads, we could compete, but when it was across-the-board cuts, we got hurt pretty significantly. So these defense contracts that were offsetting military personnel cuts were suddenly cut, and the cuts that we saw in military personnel were now exacerbated by defense contracts cuts. So we did see them contracting pop back up a little bit again in 2017, 2018, 2019. But here, we're looking at defense contracts, and we're looking at a very uncertain future. And I'll talk a little bit more about this later. With respect to the port, one of the three legs of the Hampton Roads economy, we talk about defense, the port, and tourism. And of course, the port is certainly a big part of that. With respect to containers, we've seen container growth consistently as the growth, the world trade market has increased. The number of ships has declined as the size of these ships has become incredibly huge. And then if we look at the market share on the East Coast, we've actually stayed relatively constant in Hampton Roads. I think the huge investments made at the port have helped us to be very competitive and maintain market share. One of the things that was very surprising is this past September, the port broke the September record for the container move through the ports. So after the initial decline that we saw in COVID, the port has actually seen some pretty significant jumps in trade, and they've managed it incredibly well. So we're very fortunate to have a strong port. One thing that's worth just pointing out here is the number of containers and the amount of movement through the port is not really indicative of the port's impact on employment in Hampton Roads. What is indicative of the employment in Hampton Roads is more, the fact that the port is here encourages a lot of other industries to co-locate around here, and that brings a pretty significant impact into the region regardless of the rise or fall of containers in the region. The port is also really has a lot of momentum behind economic development incentives and bringing people to the Commonwealth to use the port and is using that as a job growth generator. Tourism, the third leg of the three-legged stool, has been interesting. As I said before, this is not consistent across the region. I think Virginia Beach has done just a fantastic job with respect to tourism growth in recent years, and they've performed especially well during the COVID depression. If you look at Hampton Roads, you know, for the last several months, we get statistics in, and they show the top 25 tourism markets, and Hampton Roads outperforming every other market in the US with respect to hotel nights, even though the region has taken a significant hit, especially in the historic triangle. But tourism in the region has, I think, done really, really well. You can see, we've seen significant growth since 2009. A lot of that has been the region expanding on the shoulder seasons, and I think, you know, investments that you make into the region to expand the options that are here, like the adventure park at the aquarium, you know, you see a lot of people out there. Historic Triangle has tried some pretty significant initiatives and downtown Norfolk as well, but we're really working on expanding the shoulder seasons and bringing sports into the region. That has benefited us significantly. We see employment's up 8% over 10 years. Hotel revenue, which had actually declined for some time due to a lot of these sharing apps like Vacation Rental By Owner, is actually up. So Hampton Roads, while suffering in this regard, is outperforming the rest of the nation. Drive-to-market with a lot to offer has benefited us well. Turning quickly to retail sales and looking at some of the revenue components that help fund local government. If we look at this chart initially, we can see actually, retail sales are up significantly. We're 22.5% above where we were going back to 2006. We've seen significant growth. If we look at an annualized growth rate, we've grown at 1.9% since 2006, and that sounds pretty good. If we look at this in terms of an inflation-adjusted rate, we're at 0.1% since 2006. So that's certainly not something you'd want to hitch your horse to moving forward. I think the important part of this chart here is really what is missing. If you talk to people, the chief economists at the state level, or if you talk to your own staff here, a Supreme Court case in South Dakota versus Wayfair is responsible for this. And if we look at some of the internet sales that would not have been taxed but for the Supreme Court case, things today for a lot of localities in Virginia would have looked quite a bit differently, especially with respect to retail sales taxes coming into localities. So we have essentially seen over the past year, all the growth we've seen in retail sales has come because of electronic sales. Could you imagine what would have happened during COVID if electronic sales wouldn't have been taxed? Because nobody was going to the stores and everybody's buying stuff online, and if those sales hadn't been taxed, that would have been a significant hit to the localities. And the reality is, the only reason they were taxed was because the Supreme Court case went one way versus another. This was almost revenues coming in by accident. And if we look at retail sales taxes and we see this growth, one thing I can assure you is it's not going to continue because we have essentially maxed out on what we're going to get from online sales tax. So where is growth going to come from in the future since the majority of people spend money, not so much on goods anymore, they spend it on services? And we have a very, very antiquated tax system in Virginia, and we tax goods and we don't tax services. And as we move forward with people spending an increasing amount on services and not goods, this is one of those revenue streams that will essentially stay stable or start to dry up. One of the things that has been kind of a big surprise, I think, to most everyone during COVID is what has happened in the housing market. And we're still trying to get a real handle on this and looking at data that's coming in. Everybody is aware of the huge housing boom that we had in the early part of 2000s and then the fall after 2006 where housing prices dropped significantly. And since essentially 2015, housing prices in Hampton Roads have been relatively stable, and we've seen some growth. Last year was the first year that average housing prices in Hampton Roads, in all Hampton Roads localities, actually surpassed where they were in 2004. So as a region, we've had a slow climb back to where we were, you know, since the Great Recession. But what's happening now is the housing market, for anybody who's a Realtor, can tell you, we can't keep houses on the market. If you want to sell your house, today's the day to do so. The housing market in Hampton Roads is hot, and it's a little bit surprising how hot it is. And what the question is, how long is it going to remain hot? You know, I was talking to some Realtors, you know, we could be looking at four to six to eight months of continued hot housing prices, but it's really unsure. We have federal government that has essentially put interest rates as low as it possibly can. People are having a slightly easier time gaining access to credit than they did before in the past couple of years. But it's still not clear why the housing market is as hot as it is, but it does do a lot to keep housing prices up. One of the things that we are seeing that is kind of interesting is if you look at rental rates in places that are traditionally really expensive, San Francisco, New York, they are dropping. And in Hampton Roads, they're going up. So some of these smaller metro markets like Hampton Roads are actually seeing growth in rental prices where the traditionally hot markets are declining. We're not seeing a great deal of building permits that are easing up on housing prices. So building permits in the region are remaining pretty consistent. One thing that would ease up prices would be certainly to have more building take place, but we've been relatively stable with that over the past seven years. So what is happening is if we look at housing affordability, especially for those with moderate means, low to moderate means, housing's becoming more and more expensive in the region. And once again, you know, this becomes a concern. So I would expect that the housing market will buoy the economy and especially local coffers in the near term. In the long term, unless we get employment underway, people can't continue to pay mortgages and they can't continue to pay rent if they don't have a job. So employment is going to be key to making sure that we don't start slipping with respect to housing prices. I'll just touch briefly on population growth here. Earlier, I was talking to you about the cyclical nature of defense. Earlier, I was talking to you about the cyclical nature of defense spending, and I showed you after the Vietnam drawdown, there was a pretty significant decline. We've only had two years on record, according to the Wellden Cooper Center, where Hampton Roads has actually lost population. One of those was in 1979, following that Vietnam drawdown, and one of those was in 2018. And 2019, the most recent year we have population for, did not even surpass the 2017 number. So we've seen some pretty significant growth in years where there has been expansion of DOD expenditures. So we saw that in the 60s with a 1.8% growth rate, and then the slowing after Vietnam in the 70s, 80s buildup, we saw 1.8% growth as the federal government, again, built up the DOD and built up personnel. But since that time, since there's been no more buildup in military personnel in Hampton Roads, the growth rate in Hampton Roads has slowed from 8% in the 90s, 6% from 2010, and 4%, or 0.4%, I should say, in the most recent decade since 2010. If we look at the population histogram in Hampton Roads, we certainly see the aging of the population. If you remember back to elementary school, this was supposed to look like a triangle, not the shape that it is now. It's more like Empire State Building. But you can see, we have the silent generation up top, baby boomers, Gen X, and millennials, and then the next generation coming in quite a bit smaller, and across the region, a lot of the school localities are especially looking at that, because the school population is not as big as it used to be. I'll talk just briefly about graduation rates, one thing that we've looked at in the region. For a long time, Hampton Roads compared very poorly with respect to the state graduation rates, and that was because we had a lot of people that would move in and out of the area that weren't accounted for. So once the state fixed their cohort analysis, we could see that Hampton Roads graduation rates kind of match the state. We were below the state for quite some time. We finally moved ahead of the state in 2019 with respect to graduation rates. So this is good news for the region, although I would expect our graduation rates across Hampton Roads to really outpace the state and not just match the state. If we look at per pupil spending across the region, again, this is for all of Hampton Roads, we can say that compared to the rest of the state, Hampton Roads actually spends less on education than the rest of the state average. If we're looking at just more general statistics for persons 25 or older, in terms of high school equivalents, when we compare ourselves to the nation, Hampton Roads compares pretty favorably. We have almost a 92% of people over 25 have high school equivalents compared to just under 89% at the U.S. average. One of the reasons is because we import people in through the military, and they have high school equivalents. So if we look at college attainment, Hampton Roads is actually below the national average. And then if we're looking at graduate professional degree, we once again jump up above the national average. But really, college and graduate, we're right at the national average, certainly an area that we would like to see us doing better in. With respect to government finances, this is just kind of across the board in terms of looking at Hampton Roads, you know, in terms of where our local governments choose to spend money, I think this is more of a priority list. So public works, we spend more per capita than the state average, parks and rec, general government administration, judicial administration, and public safety, we are above the state average. Then if we look at community development, education, and health and wealth care, this region spends less than the state average in those areas. Looking to the future, this is a consensus forecast for what is what we're expecting at the national level, and which will really kind of be reflected at the local level. Gross product, if you look at the end there, that's a forecast, and really, that bar is long-term averages, and you can just see what has happened in the first and the second quarter of 2020, and how much that has really just rocked, and it's, you know, the unprecedented change from what we've seen historically. It's just unbelievable, really. But if you're looking to the future there, we can see that we're expecting the next few quarters to look a lot more average as things settle out. So here's kind of a different way of looking at it. We can see how, you know, we saw a slight 5% drop in Q1, and in second quarter, we saw another drop, a pretty significant drop, and then we bounced back in the third quarter. But it's going to take us, the expectation that it'll take us at least till third quarter of 2021 to get back where we were in fourth quarter of 2019. So the initial bounce back was quick on the economy, but moving on from there is going to be a lot slower. So we saw pretty much the initial resurgence of jobs. Now we talk about how we move on forward in these really, really uncertain times. If we look at one of the scariest components for me, when I'm looking forward, I see Hampton Roads has fared really, really well in the short term and the near term, because we have not mirrored the loss near to the same degree that the nation has. A large part of our economy comes from the federal government, and that has been stable, so we have really fared better than other metropolitan areas. Even our tourism market has fared better. The ports are seeing, like I said, they've bounced back, and they had a record September. So near term, Hampton Roads with the retail sales that we've actually managed to pull in, the high housing prices, and the continued employment from the federal government, we fared really well in the near term, and especially on a relative basis to other metro areas. And so looking forward, one of the big areas of concern is these federal budget deficits. And I think that, you know, when we go back to the sequestration that we saw all the way back in 2011 through 2013, you know, when the federal government really had us come in and say, we really need to take the reins here and gain control of the spending, what they came up with was really not ideal for Hampton Roads. But at some point, this spending has to be reined in, and the Congressional Budget Office put this data together. Essentially, we're going to see consistently trillion-dollar budget deficits. And trillion-dollar budget deficits lead to massive increases of debt year over year. And when we have over 50% of discretionary expenditures devoted to defense, it's really difficult to make any impact on this. You can increase revenues through taxation, that's really not popular, and you can decrease spending in areas that you have control over, and when over 50% of those areas that you have control over are defense spending, that's really what can impact Hampton Roads in the future. So this is certainly a concern of us moving forward, as we expect that, you know, in the not-too-distant future, Congress is going to wrestle with how they handle these budget deficits and make a decision on what they're going to do. So, yeah, I always end with this chart here. We call this the spaghetti chart. This is Hampton Roads, and this is commuting patterns across the region. So what's the point of talking about regional numbers in front of the Virginia Beach City Council and School Board? It's because really what happens in Hampton Roads happens in Virginia Beach and vice versa. This region is so interconnected, I don't know, it's one of the most interconnected regions in the nation when we look at commuting patterns. And if you look at just Virginia Beach, 40% of the workers in Virginia Beach, 40% of your workforce actually leaves the city to go work in another locality, and 30% of the people working here come in from a different locality. This region is really interconnected. We have a lot of exciting things going on, I think, through the chief administration officials and through the PDC Board and TPO Board, and a lot of these regional initiatives. We have a lot of positive things actually happening in the region. $5 billion worth of transportation projects going on, regional broadband, that's pretty exciting. We have economic development, I think, that's really finally starting to hit their stride in moving forward, massive investments at the port. So there's a lot of really positive initiatives across the region that we hope that will really make their mark. Offshore wind has been a very exciting component that we've been able to work on, fortunately. So there are very positive things when we're looking to the future, but, you know, when I'm asked, what do I see coming up in the next couple of years? I can't stress enough the uncertainty here. Clearly, we see these COVID rates coming up, and it makes for just a more uncertain future in how we handle this pandemic moving forward. So not entirely a clear crystal ball, that's for sure, but that concludes my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, or am I supposed to wait?
Greg, thank you once again for a magnificent presentation, which you always do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Good afternoon. So Greg did a great job of providing an economic overview of the region. So at this point in time in the presentation, I was going to shift the focus to have a conversation on general fund projected revenues, as well as city assumptions and expenditures over the forecasted period. At the conclusion of my portion of the presentation, Farrell Hansacker from Schools will come up and provide schools' five-year forecast. So with any financial forecast, the first thing that we begin with is looking at baseline revenue projections over the forecasted period. So the general funds revenues, not only shaped the city, but also the schools, as the general fund shares various revenues with the schools, based on the school funding formula, with 46.75% of those. So it's important to note, though, that in terms of the baseline revenue projection over the forecasted period, there was no assumed rate increases for any tax sources, real estate, personal property. These are all baseline projections based on growth trends. Looking back over, looking at history of general fund revenues, budget to actual, we've been very consistent and fairly accurate in terms of our budgeted projections of revenues. As you can see from the table, revenues typically come in within a percentage point on the average, I think it's about 0.1%. There's a lot of uncertainty in the revenues. Highlighted here is the FY 1920 budgeted revenues for the general fund to the actual collections. Again, these are the unaudited numbers, but this was welcome news that we ended FY 20 better than we were anticipating. City Council received a presentation about this some time ago. It was all welcome news, and I think it was better than we all anticipated this to be back in April of last year. But still, there's a lot of unknowns. At that point in time that we were closing out last fiscal year, at the beginning of the pandemic, there was a lot of federal stimulus funds floating around in the local economy, and we're not exactly sure how much those acted as a buffer stimulating the local economy and the impact that it had. Doing a little bit more drill down, looking at some of these revenues, more specifically, real estate, starting with that one, which is the general fund's largest revenue source, representing about 50% of the general fund's total revenue. If I can take a moment just to familiarize everybody with this, the green line, or the green line going across there represents the actuals, general fund actuals for real estate revenue over time. The white line represents the budgeted amount on an annual basis, and then the yellow line is the projection going forward. We work really closely with the real estate assessor to develop our revenue projections for real estate. He's estimating that over the five-year forecast period, real estate's projected grow on average about 3% each year of the forecasted period. In FY 22, we're anticipating revenue growth of real estate, about $34 million from the current budgeted amount. This is growth that's slightly higher than 3%, as a matter of fact, is about 5% revenue growth. The reason for that is that our current year revenue estimates were revised so low in terms of anticipation of lowered revenue collections from the pandemic, that whenever you see a 3% assessment growth from FY 21 to 22, it appears that the revenue is growing slightly higher than that 3% assessment base. So real estate's something that we're anxiously awaiting December collections on. Real estate's collected twice a year, December and June. We won't really have a good sense of how we're doing in our projection of this and what we're actually going to be receiving in this revenue until the December timeframe. Historically, in December, we've received about 51% of our annual actual collections of real estate at that point in time. Taking a look at personal property, this is one of our more difficult revenue streams to project over the course of time. It's mostly because 80% of this revenue source is collected at the end of the fiscal year, so most of it is due in June. So you really don't have a sense of how you've done with your current year-to-date actuals until the fiscal year is pretty much over. So we've been always conservative in trying to estimate this revenue and do a projection of this. Personal property consists of various property categories, personal property categories such as boat, mobile, or excuse me, commercial vessels, mobile homes, vehicles. Vehicles represent the largest portion of the assessment base, with used car values representing about 90% of that, which is a good thing, because in working with the Commissioner of Revenue and doing this revenue projection, they're projecting that used car values are going to hold their value well over the next year, which could act as a good buffer to this revenue source, should there be a downturn in the local economy and new car sales not be at their previous levels, which are then feeding into the assessment base for this. So in looking forward, we've conservatively estimated in FY 22, personal property to be $166 million revenue source. This represents about an $8 million increase when comparing FY 21 to FY 22, but really in FY 21, it was a lowered base, because this was a revenue source that we revised down considerably in anticipation of the COVID-19 pandemic. But comparing back to FY 20, you can see that our FY 22 estimate of $166 million is in line with where we ended last fiscal year. Looking at general sales, this has generally been one of our more consistent, reliable revenue sources, seeing annual growth of about 3% a year. Whenever we're doing our estimates for general sales, we conservatively have estimated this to be $69 million in FY 22, which represents about a $6 million increase compared to the current year budgeted number, but it's really in line with where we ended up last fiscal year in FY 20, as Greg had just noted. It's a conservative estimate, but also in addition to that, there was a law change requiring online sales tax to be remitted and collected by the state, which is helping support this revenue, obviously. This will continue to buffer this revenue, should additional orders come in from the governor or from the state requiring limited space within facilities and limiting the face-to-face interaction. We could continue to see that online sales help hold up this revenue throughout the pandemic. B-Pole or Business Professional Occupational License, this is one of the revenue sources that we call consumer-driven revenue, in that this is based off gross receipts submitted by businesses whenever they get an active business license within the city. Our FY 22 revenue projection on this is $53 million, which does represent a little over, close to $7 million increase compared to our current year budgeted estimates. However, it's in line with where we ended FY 20 and actually receiving $53 million. This is a revenue source that we're really not going to have a good sense of. Some of the other revenues, such as general sales, hotel, and meal, we can look at on a monthly basis to see how we're tracking and trending. B-Pole's not actually due until later in the fiscal year in March, so we really won't have a good sense of where we stand with this one until a bit later this fiscal year. And looking at restaurant and meals tax, the restaurant industry's really been one of the industries that's been hit hardest by the COVID-19 pandemic. You can see that in FY 20, actual collections came in below the budgeted amount. It's important to note that this really is a $60 million revenue stream citywide, but the graph here is representing just the general fund portion of that tax base. So in FY 20, it underperformed by about $6 million. underperformed by about $6 million. It's really hard to determine how much of this was due to slowed economic activity. At the onset, at the beginning of the pandemic, city council took several initiatives to try to stimulate and provide fiscal relief to those businesses that were being impacted hardest by the pandemic, and as a result, provided a meals tax holiday, effectively suspending the meals tax collection, as well as delaying the collection of penalties and fines and fees for delinquent taxes being remitted to the city. There's a lot of unknowns with this. We've been working with the city treasurer's office, and we are familiar that there, the number of delinquent accounts for trustee accounts is up compared to the pre-pandemic days. However, we have seen a slight decline in that in recent times, which could be a good sign that some of these individuals are catching up and able to afford paying these taxes. Conservatively, we've estimated this revenue source in FY 22 to be $38 million within the general fund, which is a slight increase of where we're at in our current year budget. However, it's in line with where we ended last fiscal year. Initially, when we were talking about bouncing back from the recession, or from this pandemic, we thought that it was going to be more of a V shape, where this would be a quick recovery. As you can see, our restaurant tax projection's more of a U shape, in that we're projecting a slow recovery in this revenue stream back to the pre-COVID-19 pandemic revenue levels. We're anticipating that to occur beginning in FY 23. Looking at hotel tax, again, another industry that was heavily hit by the pandemic. You can see in FY 20, this revenue source underperformed the budgeted estimate. In looking forward to FY 22, we're projecting this revenue source for the general fund to be $7 million, which is slightly higher than where we're at in the current year budget, but in line with where we were in FY 20's actuals. It's also important to note, similar to restaurants, this is just the general funds portion of the hotel tax, and this is really more of a $30 million revenue source. And similar to meals or restaurant, we're anticipating this revenue source to slowly grow and recover back to the pre-COVID-19 revenue levels back beginning in FY 24. Telecommunication tax, some background on this, back in 2006, the state consolidated several local tax revenue sources and began collecting a tax at the state level for landline phones, cellphones, satellite cable TV services. Since that point in time, this revenue's been steadily declining, and the city of Virginia Beach has been seeing less revenue each year. We don't anticipate this trend to change. Suspected the primary reason for this is that there's been changes in technology the state code just hasn't quite kept up with in allowing taxes to be collected for. So as individuals are cutting their cord and moving towards streaming services and online services are outside of that tax umbrella, we're anticipating this to continue to decline. In FY 22, we're projecting that to be a $2 million revenue reduction compared to our current year, or 5% decline. So those are some of the bigger revenue sources. I've provided a little background and overview on this portion of the presentation. We're going to shift, looking at expenditure assumptions and those that were embedded and included in the five-year forecast. Beginning with compensation increases, I would like to caveat that obviously, any compensation increase that's provided would be at the discretion of city council and have to be authorized by city council. For the purposes of the five-year forecast, a 3% compensation increase, or salary increase was included in year one and 2% in the years beyond the initial year of the forecast period. The thinking behind this is that in the original proposed operating budget, both the schools and city had included a compensation increase, with the schools requesting 3.5%, and the city 2.5%. During the reconciliation process, those got pulled out due to the COVID-19 pandemic. City council, as part of the reconciliation letter, had requested the possibility of a mid-year review pending how revenues were doing in the current year for possible consideration to either restore partially or the 2.5% compensation increase. In addition to that, city council's also possibly considering a market salary survey, which if any findings were to come out of that, city council could have the discretion to, in fact, implement some of that beginning in FY 22 if possible. So again, the thinking was just a higher year one for the purpose of visually demonstrating and showing the impact of that in the forecasted period, and then lowering to 2% each year. But again, caveat, any compensation increase provided would be at the discretion of city council and require city council authorization. Looking at inflation, the five-year forecast assumes a 2% inflationary rate over the forecasted period. This is in line with the Federal Reserve's monetary policy. It's slightly higher, according to BLS, Bureau of Labor Statistics, where we've been experiencing inflation, and inflation over the last year. However, over the forecasted period, we've gone with a 2% assumption. Other compensation-related budget drivers are rate increases associated with the Virginia Retirement System or the VRS rate. Those are anticipated to occur beginning in FY 23 and FY 25. In addition to that, an assumed health insurance cost increase of 3% annually is assumed. Other operating budget impacts related to the CIP were included into the baseline expenditure forecast. An example of this is the opening of the Burton Station Fire and EMS station, requiring the staffing of 30 firefighters, as well as paid paramedics, with an annualized cost of about $3 million a year. Debt service is based on the existing CIP and projected issuances based on the existing CIP. Also included in the projected five-year forecast are revenue reserves. Those are included in both '22 and '23. I'll speak to these more in a minute, as I have a slide for these, but these are really placeholders due to some of the uncertainty that we're seeing with the revenue sources. And I would also like just to highlight that no reductions were made in the baseline forecast, trying to close any financial gap. No reductions weren't made, nor were increases made to try to balance each fiscal year. The purpose of the forecast is to demonstrate what a potential gap could be based on the set of assumptions. So for that reason, budget balancing methods have been used in the past by city council and city leadership, such as budgeting for attrition, were not assumed in the baseline forecast. This does not mean that the city manager might not include that as part of his proposed budget, and this does not mean the city council won't include this as a part of the ultimate adopted budget. But for the purposes of the five-year forecast, we're trying to show what type of gap might exist based on all the assumptions that have been laid out. So in looking at the general fund revenues and expenditures over time, the city's anticipating a deficit each year of the five-year forecast period. Year one seeming significant at $24.9 million and slightly improving to $12 million, $12.8 million in year two. Then there's a little bit of a yo-yoing effect that occurs over each year of the forecast period, and as you see in FY 24, it improves and then worsens in FY 25. Again, that yo-yoing effect's being brought on by the VRS rate increases that are projected to occur over time. So the $24 million seems like a larger one deficit, but I did want to highlight, a large part of that's being driven by these revenue reserves that we put into place. I had mentioned these. So as I was going through the revenue sources, there's a lot of unknowns with those. You know, the information and the estimates are based on the best information that we have to date. However, there's still a lot of unknowns. Additional orders that come in that could require the aquarium, libraries, or parks and rec facilities to close their doors and not have access to the public could impact their departmental revenue sources. So it's really unknown if reductions come in, or if we see reductions in revenues, where those sources might be. So what we've done for the purposes of the forecast and the beginning of the budget process is we placed a $13.5 million reserve, revenue reserve in the year one and a $6.75 million in year two. In year one, this is equivalent about a 1% revenue reserve. So the thought behind this is that should we see a downturn in these revenues, this will provide us flexibility, and we'll be able to put a plan together to address any downturns that occur in our revenue estimates. We're hopeful that that doesn't occur and that our revenue estimates stay true and in line with where they're at. But again, it's best for us to go into this with planning for the worst-case scenario as we begin the budget process. Over time, you can see that this budgeted revenue reserve is eliminated beginning in FY 24 and '25 of the forecasted period. So to visually demonstrate this, if you were to remove that revenue reserve from year one, year two of the five-year forecast, you can see that the year one, two deficit improved significantly. And in addition to that, something to consider, and it's not displayed here, but a 3% compensation increase is equivalent of about $12 million within the general fund. So if that was to be removed from the forecast period as well, the year one deficit could potentially be eliminated. But again, this is should the revenues materialize where we think that they are at this point in time. Typically, the five-year forecast has included a focus on the general fund. However, recently, there's been a lot of requests for additional needs and services for the resort area and ask from the tip fund. An example of this is the resolution passed by city council on September 1, requesting the city manager to establish the resort management office. So we've included a little baseline tip fund projection within the five-year forecast. So the table up above on this slide is the baseline forecast for the tip fund begin, over the next five-year period. As you can see by the box that I highlighted on the screen, the tip fund has the capacity to maintain and meet all of its existing obligations over the forecasted period. As a matter of fact, this includes things such as the dome site, sports center, and debt service-related some of those projects. So the tip fund has the capacity to maintain its existing obligations. I did want to remind council and viewing public that the tip fund used a significant amount of fund balance in the current year's operating budget just to maintain current-level services. In fact, it was $14.8 million the tip fund used of its fund balance to maintain its current services, as well as keep current services maintained within the TAP fund or the Tourism Advertisement Program, which also saw a revenue reduction as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So the next table on this slide represents the impact of the establishment of a $1.5 million resort management office within the tip fund over the five-year period. As you can see, year one, year two of the tip fund have the ability to absorb that. However, beginning in FY 24 and '25, the cumulative fund balance within the tip fund runs negative. So it's several years out, and there's a lot of planning to go into place. However, based on this, the assumptions within this projection, the resort management office would not likely be able to be sustained based on the current revenue projections and expenditures that exist within the tip fund. So some decisions might be required in the future if revenues stay on this track, in terms of possibly redirecting some of the expenditures elsewhere within the tip fund, making service reductions elsewhere, or potentially looking at the extension of some of the sunset tax that are in place within the tip fund. An example of this is the sunsetting of the $1 per room night that is set to sunset within the forecasted period within the tip fund. And again, this is based on baseline projections of the tip fund, and hopefully, none of those things are required as revenues could just potentially increase and grow at a faster rate than we're currently projecting. So the last slide I have before Farrell comes up is just kind of a quick summary of possible other threats and things that could impact the financial figures that you all have seen to this point. Obviously, continued and longer recovery of the COVID-19 pandemic, implementation of any of the Hillard Heintz recommendations that came out of their independent investigation of the 531 incident. Also, any future needs that are to be identified or found, it needs for the SWAM office, the newly established SWAM office, future impacts of the CIP, or any projects the city council might add or determine as being a new priority or a higher priority, and the debt service associated with that, if bonds are issued, as well as the possibility of a future bond referendum to be considered by city council for discussion, and the impact that that might have on the debt metrics. So that concludes the city's five-year forecast presentation, and I'll be coming back up at the conclusion of Farrell's presentation to take any questions that council might have.
Thanks a bunch. Great report. Thank you. Farrell.
Good afternoon. I only have a few more slides, so take a deep breath, we'll get through this real quick. Hopefully, leave some time for questions and dialogue. Shown on this slide are our revenue projections, and we are showing the projections. Kevin indicated to you the reason for the relatively high percentage increase in the first year, and it's the same for the schools, because we also are projecting that revenue reserve in the first year and the second year. On the expenditure side, the schools mirror the city's assumptions regarding salaries at 3% in the first year and 2% for the rest of the forecast period each year. The VRS rate for schools will increase 1% in '22 and '23, and then again, 1% in '23 and '24, projecting that employer healthcare increases by 3% per year over the forecast period. On the expenditure side, those line items that are more related or affected by inflation, we will project them to increase by 2%. And also, in alignment with the city and schools, will retain, again, the revenue reserve in the first year and also in the second year to deal with potential revenue reductions or shortfalls. This reserve in the first year for schools will be $8.9 million, and then it's half that in the second year at $4.4 million. We just called this slide our budgetary controls and challenges, could be opportunities also. Certainly, as the schools look forward to future years, if they want to be expanding programmatic programs or major initiatives, that will cost money, that'll have to be considered. We have a priority and have had a priority on school safety. That's a fairly expensive line item in our budget. We just experienced a tremendous increase in our technology expenditures. Part of that was covered by the Federal CARES Act funds, but that's an ongoing challenge for us. As with the city and the schools together, employee compensation and workforce challenges in terms of retaining and recruiting most qualified people we can get, the issue of employee benefits, and do we hold firm with that, or do we consider changes with that? Schools are realizing decreased enrollment, specifically this year because of COVID-19. Our 30-day, 30-day September benchmark for enrollment and our average daily membership, we were down 2,900 students over the previous year. So that's going to be an issue going forward. We are sure that those declines won't hold fully in next year, but it's an ongoing issue for schools, in terms especially state, state revenues. We also are dealing with state and federal mandates. The city does that, too. Mandates are those things that are mandated by the federal government and by the Commonwealth of Virginia, and they don't put any money behind. of Virginia, and they don't put any money behind it. The last time we did an analysis of that was about two years ago, and for the schools, it was about $43 million. This chart just shows the forecast, either surpluses or deficits. As you can see here, the schools have deficits in the first two years. In the outer years, there are some surpluses. And just some closing thoughts here. The city forecast projects as deficit each of the forecast period. However, any change to the baseline assumptions obviously could eliminate some of those deficits. Kevin mentioned that in some of the examples he gave earlier. The schools' forecast, similar to the city's forecast, changes, any changes in the assumption will impact the numbers that we presented in the forecast. One of the thoughts that we have is regarding perhaps bond referendum, the subject of bond referendum. Both city and schools have historically shared the city's legal bonding authority. Both city and schools are facing the need to modernize, renovate, and maintain existing assets and infrastructure. The possibility of a future bond referendum for stormwater will likely limit the city debt capacity to address these backlogs, including the school's CIP priority needs shown in the school's long-range facility master plan. There will likely need to be a discussion of existing debt metrics and possible raising them to address all of these critical needs. Pandemic lasting longer than initially estimated resulting in a projected U-shaped economic recovery is what we're experiencing, and we hope won't be extended too many more months out in the future as we're projecting the pre-recovery, two pre-recovery level numbers in 2024. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our presentation. We're happy to address any questions at this time.
Okay, members of city council, with the technology challenges that we have, if it's okay, we're going to ask school board to get through their questions first, and I think it will go a lot smoother instead of transitioning back and forth. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. I wanted to let city council members know as well, joining late to the meeting were the school board members Kim Melnick, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Holtz, and Ms. Hughes. They were all able to join, and they joined just a few minutes later than we began. School board members, do you have any questions or comments you would like to make? If so, raise your virtual hand to be recognized. Ms. Beverly Anderson, if you will pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments. Thank you.
Are you ready for me?
Ms. Anderson, we are ready. If you could just begin your comments. Thank you.
Are you ready for me? Okay.
We can hear you.
Thank you. So with the increases, projected increases in healthcare costs and the projected increases in VRS, keeping that in mind, and the projected increases in salaries of 3% in 2022 and 2% in 2023 through 2026, I can't help but wonder if that means that our employees are going to have 0% increase in take-home pay or even less than that. Can somebody explain to me the difference between, you know, we said the projected 3% in 2022 for salary increase and then the projected 2% in 2023 to 2026? I just hard to believe that we're going to actually cause our people to have less take-home pay with inflation rates as they are. So can somebody explain that to me? Are we going to absorb that as a city? Or are we expecting our employees to come up with those increases in VRS and the increases in the healthcare costs? Because if we're only going to give them, if we're only estimating a 3%, it's not enough. I'm sorry. But we have to start forecasting priorities. And for me, priorities means that we need to start paying our teachers, especially because there's a national shortage of teachers. We have to show major increases there. So am I wrong in that I'm looking at an increase, those increases which are just minimal, yet we're also forecasting VRS increases and healthcare costs? Could somebody explain that, please?
It's Farrell. That was a good question, and I'm sorry, for the point and time of time to do this presentation, we didn't address all the specifics. That 3% increase in healthcare costs is related solely to the employer. In the forecast, we just included that cost just to the employer, not to the employee. Now, remember, this is a forecast, so that could change as we deal with each year's budget as it's developed. The VRS increase for schools is only the employer cost and not related to the employee's cost. So what you described without that information would in fact be true, but it's not true because we're not at this point in time regarding the forecast passing those costs along to the employees.
Any other questions or comments from school board members? If so, please raise your virtual hand. And Ms. Anderson, your virtual hand is still up. If you would lower that, thank you. Any additional comments or questions from school board members? If so, raise your virtual hand. If not, we'll turn the meeting over to the mayor and allow council members for questions and comments. Mayor, no one has raised their virtual hand from school boards, so I'll turn the meeting back over to you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Wood, then Mr. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is primarily for Farrell, I think. And just as I look through this, I take a look at, you know, how schools have been closed for a while, and I just wonder, has that had any impact on the budget with respect to, you know, savings on hourly salaries, utilities, that sort of thing from buildings being closed and perhaps people that are only there when students are there?
We're doing constant analysis of that, but yes, we have realized and would continue to realize some savings as long as the buildings are not open fully. In addition, we've had elementary kids back in and some other special needs kids, and I think the ninth graders back in for several weeks. We're using all the buses that we have, but now we're going back virtual. So we will have savings, not necessarily in salaries of bus drivers, but in the fuel for buses and the maintenance of the buses. So yes, some savings, but we're experiencing a significant amount of additional expense in terms of overtime, in cleaning the buildings, in terms of what we're spending on cleaning products, PPE items. We're, in many cases, having to pay teachers to teach students in the classrooms, those that are in classrooms, at the same time teaching a group of virtual students, the same teacher. So we're having to pay stipends for that. So we're realizing some additional cost. So we're going to be analyzing it every month as we go throughout the rest of the year and see, you know, where we wind up at the end of this first quarter and then the second quarter. We'll be monitoring it all the time, but yes, we will have some savings for those things when we don't have the buildings open fully, we don't have all the buses on the road. Thank you.
Mr. Moss.
Mr. Moss, could you please turn your microphone on? Thank you.
I know we're at 3:25, five minutes from the time we were supposed to be ending this slide. I hope we're extending this somewhat so we can have a discussion, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what our time schedule allows.
I'll tell you what, we will accommodate extra time, Mr. Moss.
Right, thank you very much, and I will not cover all the things. I studiously looked at this, but I'm going to make some general comments, and I have some specific questions. But I'll be quick. The stock market is way up, but less than 10% of the stock market accounts for the gains, so I think people need to understand that. I think a key observation that needs to be made, while gross domestic product is up, the percentage of the gross domestic product that goes to wages is down, down over 2%, which is significant in a $20 trillion economy. So what really means is that workers and the private sector that generate the wealth for government are getting a decreasing share of the economic performance, which is why private sector salaries are lagging. So I think people need to understand that when they talk about how oppressed their pay is. I think you've covered well about the employment, but I think it's also important to note that Dr. Cook often used to cover the jobs we gain back. We're not as well-paying as the jobs that we lost, and when you look at our bond prospectus about private sector employment, you see that. So it does get to the capacity of our people to pay, so we shouldn't overlook that. And when we look at the employment, I notice we always exclude the military pay, but you may remember from Dr. Cook's five-year forecast, he talked about between the federal civilian employment and the federal military employment, that accounted for almost all the wage gains on these indices. It wasn't driven by private sector wages. So I think we need to realize that because we tax private businesses, we don't tax the federal government. So I think that's an important point not to lose factor when you're looking at income. When you're looking at Slide 15, annualized real defense outliers, in World War II, we weren't spending $60 billion a year on healthcare, and we also weren't paying our people as well. So that chart to the far right is much more salary and benefits than the other chart. So there really isn't a lot going in the services because we're doing most of that what? An acquisition, which you mentioned. So you've got to look at that chart and understand how that, what makes that up has changed over 150 years. So while we have fewer people in the military, as Dr. Cook pointed out before, they are better paid. So the salaries being spent in the community are up even though the numbers are down. Something I think is an important point. Now getting to city revenues, I wish, Mr. City Manager, that in the future, we could really get a total budget. Because in the end, this council can look at those trustee accounts and make adjustments. All money is fungible short of the enterprise accounts in our budget process. So we really ought to see them all, and I wish we could get a slide on the TIP fund because we used to harvest money from Sandbridge, you may recall. Maybe we can harvest money from the Town Center TIP. Don't know that we can or cannot. My last point I wanted to make, because there's a lot of revenues in here, and I think what the out uses are, I don't know, but I do believe that our number one issue that we face is underfunding our flooding threat. I realize schools would like a higher capitalization rate, but I'd rather have kids going home to dry homes and not worried at night if their home's going to flood when it rains, than maybe increasing the speed at which we recap schools. I don't know how you can go out and tell people that, whether it's a rec center or a school, that that's a higher priority than keeping their home dry or keeping our roads navigable as we just saw from a seven-inch rain. So I hope that as we have these joint discussions, we've got to look at the priorities from the eyes of the consumer, of the homeowner, of the business person. And I realize we always like to pay people more money, but I'm sure many people around this table know people who what? Got their hours reduced and lost their healthcare, haven't seen a pay raise in a couple of years. So hardship is a relative term. We certainly don't want to be unfair to our employees, but I don't think any of us would want to think that we'd be reducing the standard of living of our neighbors who had less so that they could not have to share in the cost of the new economy. So that's probably not popular, I suspect, but those are comments I hear from business people, and I suspect I'm not alone in hearing those. And so we want to be fair, but we don't want to be unfair to the private sector. I think sometimes we haven't done a good job, Mr. City Manager, as a body and as management, of really showing people, which I hope a more comprehensive salary would show, is to show how insulated people's pensions are from the marketplace versus people's 401K, how there are less employment risks in the private sector, that we pay 80% about a family health insurance, the private sector usually pays zero. So these are all things that while you sometimes might think that you're the disadvantaged person, in the larger scheme of things, you know, you're more fairly compensated than you might think. My wife's a schoolteacher. I have seen at home, at school, the extra work that they've had to do, and bless their heart. But that doesn't mean we can go and raise taxes, and it doesn't mean we can insulate them necessarily from larger economic consequences and still grow the city, Mr. Mayor. That's my point. I think we've got to strike a balance, but I think unless we see everything, and we used to get a chart in our five-year forecast, I know some of my council members will remember, where we would not only show the debt capacity available, we would also show by category how that debt was being consumed, whether it was a TIP or it was a TIP or where was that money going? I think that would be an instructive chart. I know there's more stuff in the report on debt, but we don't have that comprehensive matrix that shows us the allocation. And I noticed that in the report, that the percentages were much lower than in the last five-year report. So I don't know what the reason for that was. You may recall, we were up close to 10% in a couple of years, '22, '23, before we paid off the pavilion, but now the numbers are much lower. I'd like to know why that is. And I would hope that we could, Mr. Mayor, at a future date, have a discussion with the school board about debt allocation. You know, I've talked about that a lot, and I think we need to have one among ourselves as well, how we use debt, because now debt, independent of how you pay for it, is our most limiting asset under our current policy. And whether or not, I would agree with you, whether or not that current policy is still the right one. With that, I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Daheny, I think we're ready to go into manager briefings.